Well, look at that. We are on. Going to call this meeting to order Monday, May 1st, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, Pledge of Allegiance, 25, I stand so sorry to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Should we say it again because there's two?
Say again?
Should we say it again because there's two?
Yeah. We have a large crowd here tonight. And I know some of you are here to try and address the situation in regards to the fire department. So the Board of Selectmen here, we have a prepared statement in regards to that situation. So, we understand that many of you have questions in regards to the fire department. The town is currently in the process of a personnel investigation. At this time, we are not permitted to disclose the details of investigations or of individuals involved. We are not able to answer questions about these details either. The town has relied on legal counsel to hire a neutral investigator and take the necessary steps required by the town personnel policies. I know that that probably isn't enough for some of you, but in order to protect the integrity of the investigation, we are, we cannot discuss a personnel matter. That is your opinion. That is your opinion. We're hoping possibly this could be wrapped up this week. I'm hoping, but there's no guarantee because investigations, this is not unheard of for investigation like this to go on this long. So that being said, it could be next week. I'm hoping we could wrap things up this week. But again, it's all based on the investigator. Any other comments?
Yes. Are you going to address the findings at that time to an open meeting?
If the report is, is prepared and ready at that point, we could, but most likely not. Early indications is the report won't be ready by the next meeting.
When it is ready, will you let the public know?
We will just refer to legal counsel in regards to that, and if we can, we will discuss it, yes.
In other words, it may not be disclosed?
Yes.
Outrageous.
Yeah. We got, yeah, okay. Any other questions? If there's no other questions in regards to the fire department, we're going to move on to doing regular business. Go ahead.
I do have questions, but I don't want your agenda.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. And why don't we, we can move her up first to get, get the rest of the fire department stuff out of the way.
Sure.
Lorna, if you want to. Yeah, yeah, right there. Please state your full name and address, please.
I brought copies for you guys if you want to talk about it.
Careful, careful. Thank you.
So my name is Lorna Arkand. I live at 188 Stage Row, about a mile between Twixt here and the fire department. So I found out about this from social media, which we all know is a wealth of absolutely accurate knowledge. I'm not going to ask you what the complaint was that was made or who made it or anything like that because I realize it is confidential at this time. But I have other concerns. The first is, is the deputy chief, I think that would be Matt Curry, is he now the interim chief?
No, he's not.
Why not?
We wanted the neutral person to be in the, in that position, to hold that position.
Okay. Is the person, um...
No.
Was the person asked to fill this role while the current chief and lieutenant are on leave?
I'm sorry?
The person who was asked to fill the role, were they, was that because the chief and the lieutenant are on leave?
He was, he, this person was installed while the investigation is pending.
And who is the acting fire chief right now?
The acting fire chief is Dale Sylvia.
All right. So that, that's something that was online. Is he a licensed EMT? Or has his license lapsed?
License has lapsed. He's not going to EMT, but he's well qualified to be fire chief.
So is he driving the rescue truck?
He's driving the utility truck, correct. There are no medical supplies in there other than your basic first aid bag.
So who's covering us when there's an emergency? If I call for help to my home, who's going to be coming to the house?
Nottingham.
Is it going to be the rescue truck or whatever it is we use typically as almost like an ambulance?
I'm not sure you understand what a first aid bag is. It's just a regular first aid kit.
I'm talking about who is a first responder? Who's going to be the first responder if I have to call 911 because I'm in physical...
It would be the ambulance.
It'd be our full-time, the full-time fire department.
Is that the same truck?
No.
Okay. Good.
No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question, Lorna.
That's okay. So the other thing that came up is this person's driving the truck.
Yes.
Home to Barrington.
Yes. Correct.
Isn't that a problem?
Why is that a problem?
Truck's not here in Nottingham for use.
He is an acting fire chief on call 24/7. He's already responded to a few fire calls already straight from his house. He's not that far over the border into Barrington.
So we call this meeting on, go order. You've got over 61 people in this room. You have over occupancy. This meeting needs to be canceled. You need to schedule in the proper room at that time. You've got people in the hallway. I'll call the fire chief if you want or the police department. You've got too many people in this room for assembly.
Do we have a, clearly you're setting up that second conference room?
I don't think it's going to be enough.
You don't think it's going to be enough?
No.
Can it be, is a gym being used?
It's not going to be televised, is the issue.
Excuse me, how over is the occupancy? How over?
61 people. You have almost 70 people out here.
How many can be in the room?
He said 61.
Well, they're out in the hallway, so you're not accommodating the crowd properly. Should've thought about that when you knew this was happening. Bad judgment on your part. You're the chairman of this board. What have you got?
Sorry, Ben. I, I know it is, but do we want to reschedule this discussion for a different date?
How many of you here for the fire department issue?
I mean, what?
All of us. Five of them out here. We stand outside and wait while the fire department issue is settled. That's a fair compromise.
Got a fair compromise?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Those who are not here for the fire, and I'm sorry, folks from the Rolling Thunder, I apologize for this.
We'll be outside.
Okay. Thank you. Are we not compromising, Jean?
There's no compromise. It says that all meetings, you can't be attended by anybody. So anybody that's leaving is going on their own free will. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
But if you have, I just want my seat back.
Hey. Can I go in the hall too? No? You know we are going to get someone right there. I understand that.
No matter what I can say, it will not be to their satisfaction.
I get it. I get it. Can we continue? Are we ready?
Do we still have the 61?
Should we just move to reschedule the meeting?
Folks want to move to reschedule the meeting? You want to press on?
I'm happy to, if that's what...
If, if we're going to do it, I prefer to do it legally. If people feel they don't have the opportunity to be in this room because of safety concerns.
Well, we have to, we have to redo the whole Rolling Thunder thing. We have to redo everybody.
Leave it up to the audience.
You need to hear the discussion. You should be able to hear the discussion to open the, you can't hear what's going on. Speak up. We just want to hear you back. We know you've got a voice.
Well, I have a voice. We were discussing whether we should reschedule this. Do you want to deal with this tonight or did you want to reschedule for another evening?
And we'll put it in the gymnasium.
You want me to run the meeting? I'd be glad to.
Well, we can reschedule it and put it in the gymnasium where we'll meet, everybody will have a space.
Don't you ask what it's about?
Well, that's what we're asking.
That's what we're asking.
I personally think it's a very compromised. People have voluntarily left the room so that we wouldn't be over occupancy. You know, I think that's pretty nice for them to do that.
I, I get, I don't want...
Once, once the fire department stuff is concerned, I don't know about the rest of them, I'm out of here. You know, it's not that it's not interesting, it's just that I'm not going to take up space where there's so many people at the meeting.
The rest of the folks feel that way? Press on with business? Are the rest of the folks good with that comment that we are going to press on with business? Or reschedule our appointment so we can accommodate everybody in the same room?
How do we respond?
I like the idea of you continuing first on the fire department. When those people have made their, uh, suggestions, then I think you should continue with the meeting.
Right. That's what I feel too. I, I agree with that.
Does everybody feel like that we'll continue with fire department business and then we'll move on?
Yeah.
Exactly. That's why I was hoping we could take care of the fire department issue first and then they will roll right into that.
Can we check with the people in the hall?
Yes.
People in the hall are here for other agendas still want to continue on. Okay.
We're pressing on. I'm sorry, Ms.
That's okay. I think we left off of the truck.
Do you speak into the mic, please?
The mic is the...
Oh, sorry. Yes. I think that, is that better?
Well, that makes more for the people on TV at home listening than it is for, it's not volume.
I think I left off about the rescue truck being located in Barrington and you basically are saying that it really doesn't have any impact.
No.
Okay, that's good. So, I know...
I did interrupt again, but there's people here, I can barely get, there's people up here that cannot hear. I don't know how to resolve that. Is there a hot mic out there that she could use?
Well, she's got a mic literally right in her face, but that's for...
I could stand over there and talk louder.
If, if you feel like you want to stand up and talk to her, I mean...
I can, I can talk louder if you'd like.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, by the way, for doing this.
So my question was about the truck being in Barrington when the chief, acting chief isn't on duty. And Ben has said that that doesn't impact us as a town. So I guess whoever it is, they're not that far from us and has already responded to a couple of fire things. The fact that he's not a licensed EMT is also not an impact because he's not serving as an EMT, he's serving as a fire chief. So that's good.
Lorna, Lorna, if I can just go a little deeper. Can everybody hear me in the back? Okay. There are no medical equipment in the truck. Okay. It's just your basic first aid kit. That's it.
Yeah.
Which any, any person can have in their vehicle.
So it's basically just a fire truck, not like the rescue ambulance that we also have?
Utility truck, correct.
Okay. So the only other thing that I, really that I have that you haven't addressed here and you may not want to, I know that you have all been getting some kind of counsel from the town attorney about this, all right? The fact that according to social media, it's been 30-plus days since the chief and the lieutenant were put on administrative leave. Allegedly, they don't know why they're on administrative leave. They don't know what the complaint was. I said allegedly. Is that going to put us at a risk of a lawsuit sometime in the future if indeed they don't know what the complaint was? Well, sometimes you can put somebody on administrative leave or say, there's a complaint. You generally tell the employee what, what the complaint was, allegedly, according to what we've been hearing on social media.
We were advised by our town council on how to proceed forward with this.
Mm-hmm.
And the two individuals that have been paid, put on paid administrative leave will be interviewed at the end, which is not unheard of.
I'm just asking if, if, okay. And if that's what the...
And it's my understanding that will take place this week.
That's what the counselor recommended. I would hope that the counselor knows that that's not going to put the, the town at some kind of risk.
I think...
Because of that action.
I'm pretty sure the counselor has taken all those facts into consideration.
That pretty much ends whatever I had to ask.
Thank you, Lorna.
Hopefully, I mean, it's, Facebook really isn't a good place to get your information half the time, but I wanted to make sure we could, could have some more solid information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now I'm going to give up my space for other people to come in.
Do we have anybody else?
Open up to anybody else that would...
Anybody else like to? Comment? We need to move on to other business. We have a board vacancy we need to discuss as well. Anybody else?
We can skip on the agenda.
John, I'm kind of on there for procedure.
Okay.
I was using them as an example, but...
Okay. Well, I just, I just wanted to make, I...
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay.
But it's relevant to what we're talking about, correct?
It happens to, yes, but, but I think it's more widespread.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll make an announcement tonight in regards to the board vacancy. Tyler Eaton did resign as a member of the Board of Selectmen. There have been, a few folks have expressed interest. The Board of Selectmen will appoint somebody to fulfill the rest of the term for Tyler Eaton.
Which is one year.
Which is one year.
Just the remainder of this year.
And candidates that we have heard from are Donna Danis, a former board member and chairman of the board, just recently had stepped down or not run. Matt Sherlin, a former candidate from this previous election, and I believe Sandra Vilchok is also a candidate. Everybody hear me in the back?
No.
All right. So the board vacancy, for the Board of Select... I wouldn't close the door. I wouldn't, don't close the door. Don't close the door. No. Vacancy on the board, the Board of Selectmen will be appointing a position for that. The candidates so far are Donna Danis, a former Board of Selectmen chairman. She's expressed interest. She was not on the ballot this time. She was at the end of her term. Matt Sherlin, another one who expressed interest. He was on the ballot this time around. And then Sandra Vilchok is the third person that has expressed interest in being appointed. I opened it up to the board for a quick discussion before we run into other things. In the best interest of the, the board, I feel that we should fill this position rather quickly based on numerous things that are coming up. What is the board comment on that?
Well, I think, in my opinion, I don't think we've announced it publicly until tonight. So, I mean, I think if we put something out publicly on the website and announce it and then at the next meeting, we can let folks know that we'll be appointing the person at that meeting on the 15th.
I would agree with that. I think, I mean, any of you want to run for the Board of Selectmen? By all means, let us know. You can be considered too. So I think by waiting until our next scheduled meeting, it would be just and fair for the rest of the town. I hate to kick the can down the road and prolong things, but...
Will you limit it to those three or any...
So this actually, if any of you guys followed the Budget Committee last year, this was, this is what happened with the Budget Committee. The, we had a mess up in, somebody was, there was a position available that wasn't actually listed on the ballot. So the Budget Committee had to appoint another member. And we did, the Budget Committee, I sat on that committee as the rep. The Budget Committee decided that they would actually hold interviews at one of the meetings and to select who the next member of that meeting was to be. All right? That was their, that was their way of handling the situation, you know, because they appointed it right there. So whether we go forward and do, do the same, have three, four, five, whoever wants to volunteer, and we do an interview process or not, that is, again... In, in my opinion, I believe that the person that had the next set of votes should be the one appointed in that position. And I'm not... It gives the voters the right to have their voice heard by seating the person with the next set of votes, that it's the highest set of votes, and that would be Matt Sherlin.
He would have to come to the meeting.
He's standing in the hall right now, right there.
Okay. Well... That is my opinion, and I believe that in order for the people to be heard, he should be rightfully appointed.
If it's a position we want to fill quickly, why wait? Exactly. Do it today.
I'm for that.
Love the people.
I appreciate the fact that Donna Danae is offering her services again, but she did choose not to run. Matt Sherlin did. He did accumulate votes. And I don't know about Ms. Vilchok or, or whatever, but in the interest of the town, if that's what we're considering, I think we're all aware, even excluding people, even including people who are not present, are aware that we've had a Board of Selectmen resign. So if we want to fill this and you know who those people are, you've asked anybody else to come forward if they're interested, I see that as expressed for the best interests of the town, why it can't be filled tonight. And my position is, I endorse the candidate who was on the ballot.
Any comments from the board? Fair enough, Donna. We gotta, we gotta make this quick. Donna, if you want to come up now?
Well, you haven't made a decision.
What do you, what do you folks want to do?
I don't have any problem appointing tonight if that's...
I don't have a problem doing it.
You do it tonight?
It's very unorthodox. Seems like that's the way things go nowadays.
Right here. Right here. And feel free, Mr. Sherlin? Feel free to face them so they can see you.
S-H-I-R.
Yes.
H?
Thank you, Matt.
No problem. Hello, everybody. If you don't know me in town, my name's Matt Sherlin. I did run for the election this year. Well, I lost by not that many votes. Still interested in helping out however I can. Obviously, there's quite a bit going on in town, and while I was not part of any previous decisions that were made, I would like to get involved, also bring in some new ideas, new perspectives. Don't really know what else to say besides been in town since around 2009 and lived over in town. We're at the Nottingham Orchard now. If you have any other questions, you can probably ask me, but that's the quick and dirty of me showing up from work 10 minutes ago.
Thank you, Mr. Sherlin.
Thank you.
Ms. Danis?
So I'm Donna Danis. As everybody here knows, I think I've served on the board for quite a while. Served on the Budget Committee before the board, been in town for 30 years. I think as I've demonstrated over the years that I was on the board, that I bring judgment, I'm prepared. I make, you know, I'm not afraid to make the tough decisions. Bring a lot of experience. Members of the board know me. I did not run again because I am not sure that I would be able to complete a three-year term, and I didn't feel it was fair, because people in town, to run for a three-year term if I couldn't complete it. This is a 10-month experience, right? A 10-month period. I think that in the 10 months, it would be beneficial to have somebody who has experience.
Thank you, Ms. Danis. Ms. Vilchok out there? No? Okay.
Well, it is our call on who we decide.
I think we've heard, go ahead. Comments up?
Well, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, there are comments there, but it's, it still comes down to the fact that it's this board's decision.
Well, it should come down to who the next person with the highest amount of votes would be Matt. I'm just saying, so as you guys make your decision, that's what I would go, like Ben said. I mean, that makes the votes sense. You guys want to go with common sense or with...
Real quick.
I agree with that.
I would encourage the board to appoint Matt Sherlin because I think that he does offer a fresh perspective, and I, I think it's time to move this town forward, and a fresh perspective, I think, is going to be really helpful considering all the things you have facing the town at this point. And I think that last year, when the Budget Committee circumvented the will of the voters, there was a lot of problems with that, and I encourage the board not to make that mistake, that same mistake.
Okay. Thank you. Real quick, Ms. Green, because...
I'd just like to encourage also what you said and to encourage, you know, our founding fathers never intended for, for the political offices to be a career, and Matt brings in a new perspective. Appreciate all of the hard work that Donna Danae has done. It requires a lot of time, but I just would go with going with the will of the people.
Thank you, Ms. Green. So are we prepared to nominate somebody and vote on him?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready.
Make nominations.
Okay.
How is it that you can make a decision tonight on two people that are here that want to, want the position when all of the people that want the position aren't here?
Well, these are people that pay attention to town politics and knew there's a vacancy and contacted the board, so they're in tune with what's going on in the town.
I'm ready to move forward.
I'd like to get a little more background on that.
Well, the, the, when he ran for, when he ran for Selectmen, was your time and your opportunity to find his background because he was a candidate for the whole time process. So we're not at, we're not rerunning an election tonight.
You're running with an election on this for a moment without all the...
We are appointing a member.
It's an appointment. An appointment of a member because one of the members resigned. This is a special situation in case that's here in front of us.
All right, I'm, we're ready to move forward?
Absolutely.
Sure. Okay.
You want to make a motion?
Yes.
No, I'm just making, you can make a motion for whatever you want.
Oh, fine. I'll make a motion to appoint Matt Sherlin as the interim Selectman for the ensuing year.
Second.
Okay. I was going to second it, but sure, go for it.
Roll call. State your name, please.
Steve Walsh, aye.
John Moore, an aye.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Matt Sherlin is now officially a... One of the Selectmen.
Once he takes his oath of office.
And he can take the oath of office. You want to take it now, Matt, or do you want to?
Whatever you want to do.
I think you should do it now.
We'll be cleared to schedule for the evening.
You want to do it?
Okay, this is the oath of office.
Okay.
Town of Nottingham. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm...
Solemnly and firmly swear and affirm.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and New Hampshire.
And will support... And will support the Constitution thereof, so I'll be gone.
And will support the Constitution thereof, so I'll be gone.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear...
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge... Affirm that I will...
And affirm that I will...
Faithfully and impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me...
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Board is elected.
As a member of the Board is elected.
Will this finishing out one-year term.
For finishing out this one-year term.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreement to the rules and regulations of this Constitution.
Agreement to the rules and regulations of this Constitution.
And the laws of the State of New Hampshire, so I'll be gone.
And the laws of the State of New Hampshire, so I'll be gone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got to sign.
Sure. Done. Who says we're going to get this done? Just kidding.
No, we did this on the same spot. No, I have him sign up here, and you're going to sign down here. We did it on the last one, too.
Alright, we can fix it later.
Alright, so I just need your signature right there. I'm going to have to read you the rest of your details.
Yes.
You're welcome.
John?
Okay. Hold on, come on. Hmm? Yeah, we're going to move right into, uh, our appointments now. Uh, we're a little behind on other things, but we surely want to get our appointments out of the way. Um, Lamprey Drive, we can discuss that. Um, it's my understanding that, um, based on our emails, correct me if I'm wrong, Ellen, is that Shaun feels that we should not accept it?
That is correct, and...
Based on?
The assessment that was completed by CMA engineers.
Okay.
Um, so I have questions on that. CMA went out and assessed the road?
Correct. The section of road, there should be a copy of it in your packets. If not, you have the Lamprey Drive folder there in front of you, Ben.
This one?
In the very back, there's only a pre-drive specific folder.
Fold it up one here.
There's a vanilla folder in there. Not in that packet. Keep going through the red folder.
These are all P...
In the red folder.
Did you see that, or did you already see that?
Yeah, that was included in the...
Okay. How has the rest of the Board feel about this?
Well, I hope the rest of the Board had at least a chance to drive over it, because I drove over it on Saturday.
Surprised I didn't meet you. I did, too.
Good job. Nice. Probably nicest part of the road.
What was this...
Well, none of it's very nice.
No.
Just my personal opinion.
So, I, I'm just curious, did, did Shaun oversee any of the construction done on that road?
No, he did not.
So, if he is qualified to determine if that road is, meets our, his standard or our standard, why wasn't he? That'd be my question, as to why he wasn't there overseeing the project if, um...
I think the question lies as to whether that section of the road was included in the petition when the town took it.
Well, it was, it was Lamprey Road in general. There wasn't a, it was all road. And, you know, I see through here, it says, "From our recent visit, it appears residents have done minor improvements." Well, if you've been there, there's no way you can consider that minor.
I have pictures of it.
Oh.
But, continue.
Um, I mean, we're talking about sixty yards of road? Maybe?
Maybe a little more, but yeah.
Not much.
No, not much.
Well, what is, alright. Of course, my main concern is, why are we looking at accepting a road in the middle of that section? To me, it would make more sense to accept the beginning section and accept it in phases.
Well, the whole road's already been accepted.
Has it?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
So, this was... That I didn't know.
This was part of a, the original subdivision from the 1960s for when that was done.
Mm-hmm.
But that part of the road was never completed. So, the residents would came in front of the Board and asked about completing that road, which is a benefit to the town and highway and every, because now it's a, there's two accesses going in and out.
It'd be easier for vehicles to plow on purposes, getting in and out of there.
Okay. And for emergency vehicles, for police, whatever, getting in and out. Now, there's two access points.
It was free.
It was...
My favorite four-letter word.
There you go.
Tim, I mean, this is not, I don't think, again, is a, in my opinion, we're not asking, you know, for a whole subdivision road of fifty houses, or, I mean, the, every lot there has been established, and that's already there. A lot of record for over fifty years or whatever. All they did was make a improvement to the road.
So that it would be included as far as maintenance?
Included, yeah. Includes this to that road, because it's all Lamprey.
Yeah.
It's all one road.
Yeah.
They just connected that, they've connected the roads.
Yeah, there were two dead ends on there.
Yeah.
So, we have two Board members that have, I've driven on that road, too, but I am no expert, and I would not even want to begin to say, "Oh, yeah, that road's acceptable." I, I wouldn't want to be that person. That's why there's engineers for that, but...
I can't really comment on it either, because I'm just, unfortunately, I'm too new to the Board, so, again, I didn't realize the front section was approved by the, uh, Board of the previous...
All the roads over there were approved.
It all came across through because of E-911.
Right.
And renaming the roads or keeping it all as one.
Hey, I'm, I'm happy with the making it part of the Lamprey Road and just moving on. That's my opinion.
Everybody else feel that way, too?
It's wide enough, it's gravelled, it's...
I don't drive a plow truck, so I'm, but I mean, I would just, if it's the same condition as the other roads, I don't know what it looked like before. I saw what it looks like now, but...
It's those woods.
Yeah.
And it's much better than even the other roads around us.
Yes.
It's fairly gravelled, sorry.
You know, it's...
So, does it connect?
Yes.
When I went out there, it looked like it dead-ended off to the left...
So, if you came...
On the right, rather. Sorry.
If you come down to Lamprey, it splits.
Yep.
If you went to the right, and you took that first left, it goes all the way through now.
Oh.
To, to the left branch.
And that's where the, the, changes have been made.
Okay. I guess I didn't drive far enough.
So, I forgot, what did Shaun say about it?
Basically, the, um, the conditions were not met.
Okay.
Following the road construction standards, 14.7 Site Plan Review Regulation for the Town of Nottingham, would need to be approved. There would also be inspections throughout the construction. Uh, none of these conditions mentioned above were followed, is what his, what his statement is, and this is why he doesn't recommend, uh, accepting that portion of the road. I don't feel comfortable voting on accepting it, um, because I don't have the background in engineering on road standards and what have you to, uh, um, make a comfortable decision.
Hi, my name's Paul Crowe, 24 Lamprey.
We're not, we're not ready yet, okay? We're still discussing the road here, okay? So, bear with me, please. So, um, I say we, we go along with what Shaun had said.
Is there something concrete that you can share with...
I would say we, we'd get something from Shaun and, and have him give it to you, um, or get together, and then go from there. I, I would put it back on him as to what weren't, what wasn't met, um, and so on.
So, the history of it, okay?
Well, I, I get the history.
Well, no, 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 I'm not going that far back.
Okay.
Okay? But we, this is bonded by the residents, okay?
Understood.
Right, and they wanted an engineering plan, but we just didn't have enough funds, with the understanding that we were going to work with Shaun every step of the way. Unfortunately, Shaun had, was out on medical leave. So, we then talked to the acting town administrator, and we were just missing. We were not communicating.
Yeah.
We made the attempt, you know? We were going to use Shaun every step of the way to review the project. We didn't know he was going on on medical leave, and the project started.
That's a fair...
And we had already hired a contractor as well. You know, we were moving forward as best we could, hoping to have his acceptance all the way.
Right.
We just couldn't get it.
Now, we do have an email from the contractor of what he put down, okay?
So...
We have pictures and...
So, how about, would you feel comfortable, and I know, you know, if we get with Shaun, all that information that you have presented, and we can put this off on the next meeting to make a decision, after you review the needed information with Shaun?
Uncomfortably, we met the standards that we should, but I'm not sure if he's holding to us that we didn't do an engineering plan. I, I don't know how we can... If that's what his main reason for, for saying no was...
I mean, this road, we had all that heavy rain.
Yes.
And this road is perfectly dry, drained properly compared to the other sections of the road, okay? Um, we know he put down four to six-inch crushed stone, and about four to six inches of it as the base after he excavated everything. He, you know, he took trees down, took the stump, removed the stumps...
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
All the way down to the soil that he could work with. He got rid of all the clay, and then he put down inch and three-quarter.
My opinion, the sixty feet makes the road, it makes the whole area over there safer for all the residents that live in there by having this access. So, that's, that's how I look at it, as a safety concern, that it's something that should have been done fifty years ago by the, the original developer of the property, but obviously, we can't go back and complain about stuff from fifty years ago, so this is the way it should have been, and I'm happy to see that they did it, and I think it benefits all the residents that live there for public safety purposes. Steve?
Personal feeling, because I haven't seen it, I thought I saw what you were talking about. It's like, oh, I don't see what they've done anything, but I, I missed the whole section of the road. So, personally, I'd prefer to table it till next meeting, have a chance to go out and see what actually you did do, and make a vote then. I don't know if that's...
And could you share the email with, with what was done, as far as how much material was put down?
So, I actually brought a copy. I don't have multiple copies, but I'm happy to give this to you guys. I can also email...
If you could email it and then...
You want me to do that? Sure, that's fine. Yeah, Kevin Hall is our contractor, he does all kinds of routes in these centers.
Oh, he, he does...
He does a great job. I, I'll be happy to send that on email. I've already sent a number of...
Alright, so, send that information, put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and then, once everybody has an opportunity, have Shaun's input, we'll move forward with it.
And if you get a chance, go for a ride.
Yeah.
And, and this isn't a dirt path, like the report says. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. It's thirty, it's twenty-four feet wide, you know?
I encourage that all the Board members who haven't gone out there to at least go out there and, and see it for themselves, and then, when we have Shaun's input, we will move forward at the next meeting.
And we might even want to see if Shaun's available for next meeting, too.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, then we can speak...
Does that work? Okay, thank you. Alright.
Sorry about that, guys. I'd have liked to make a decision tonight, but...
So, getting back on schedule, Rolling Thunder? Yeah, just, let's be mindful of the, uh, the, uh...
Did you pack it? Did you get the package with all the pictures? Did I get pictures?
You guys are on.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm, I'm staying right here. My name's Paul McGuigan. I'm here, uh, representing Rolling Thunder tonight. We were asked by some town members of Nottingham to come here and make this presentation for a POW MIA Chair of Honor. Rolling Thunder was incorporated in 1995 as a 501(c)(4) nonprofit organization with over ninety char, chapters throughout the United States and abroad. The primary mission of Rolling Thunder is to educate the public that many American prisoners of war were left behind after all previous wars. I had distributed a packet to each of the selectmen, I hope you've had the opportunity to look at it and review it. Uh, just want to note that we are not a motorcycle club or organization, we are just a veterans' advocacy group. It's just that a lot of our members ride, and a lot of our events seem to be motorcycle-centric, uh, but we're not a motorcycle club or gang. If you believe me, there's a big distinction.
So, you don't have a Halle Davidson?
There's a big distinction. So, to further educate, uh, to further, our mission, an idea was born, enacted upon many municipalities, with corporate assistance and sponsorship, to dedicate a memorial chair to POW MIA's at public venues. These memorial chairs have been given prominent places of honor in stadiums easily visible by a maximum number of people in attendance. A typical memorial chair was painted black with POW MIA insignia placed upon it, and a plaque or a letter was usually indicated, usually accompanied it to indicate what the chair was for, that it stood for the more than ninety thousand still-missing American soldiers since World War II. This chair is to remain empty to signify the absence of POW MIA members. These memorial chairs have become known as POW MIA Chair of Honors. Initially, like I said, these installations of these memorial chairs were done at public venues such as, uh, Gillette Stadium, where the chair was installed in a highly visible place. And when it was installed at Gillette Stadium, Mr. Kraft put out a challenge to all the Massachusetts sports venues, that they install a chair in their facility, and all major public, uh, sports organizations have installed a chair in Massachusetts. We've kind of been following in those footsteps. Uh, we've been responsible for having a chair put in in places such as Gillette Stadium in Manchester, Holman Stadium in Ashwa, New Hampshire Motor Speedway, Lea Raceway, Delta Dental Stadium in Manchester. Then the idea kind of morphed, and it says, "Why restrict this to outside venues? Uh, we could put these chairs inside installations on town property, such as town halls and clerk offices, departments." And we started doing that, and we now have over thirty chairs installed in other towns. I believe there was a list of towns. It's mainly all Southern New Hampshire. We are based out of Epping, New Hampshire, so we are in Southern New Hampshire, so most of our installations happen to take place there. Right now, in New Hampshire alone, there are three chapters. Each chapter works independently on items like this. We've been doing mainly Southern New Hampshire. Um, there's another chapter in Clermont, they've been doing some installations up there. And there's another chapter over in the, on the Vermont border, I can't remember exactly the town they're located in, but we do share. I've been too keen to help in installation there, we've been too keen to help over there. Yes, we also have the chair now installed at Capitol, State Capitol and the Hall of Flags. So, Rolling Thunder considers this POW MIA Chair of Honor a strong symbol of the value and dedication of patriotism for the veterans that have served and are still missing. We've been told that these memorials help families and friends of the missing to know that they have not been forgotten, and that we have not forgotten their hublins. that they have not been forgotten, and that we have not forgotten their hublins. If you were to go online, you could view, look for links for POW MIA Chair of Honors, and you can find various videos there, especially one on Gillette Stadium, where the installation took place. Purpose of this presentation is to seek support and approval to place a POW MIA Chair of Honor in this public venue on the town property in Nottingham. I know that Rick was just showing these chairs. These are two examples of the chairs. We realize that financial considerations are important, we believe that costs per project will be minimum, and we're ready to make any offer to make any recommendations as we can, such as the chair need not be a new one, it could be a chair that's painted in black, refurbished by anyone with a POW MIA logo printed upon it. We are willing to offer any manpower necessary to reach our goals. Also, a private company, Pussy Seating Company, believes in our project so strongly that they make customized chairs for us. These are team chairs that the major sports venue or major sports teams use as team chairs. One of them might have a Celtics, Celtics, or Bruins, or whatever, they make a custom chair for us. They make actually two custom chairs. This is an indoor display. On it is customizable printing, you can put what you want on here, kind of takes place of having a plaque that would have accompanied another chair. They also make stadium chairs that actually go mounted in stadiums. We've had stadium chairs installed in Pickett Center Academy, Keasarch College, High School, a couple that I can think of. So at this time, what we'd like to do is if the, we recommend it, if the town groups put in a chair, so we make the dedication or presentation of the chair as major event as possible. We'd like to invite all veteran groups and other groups, and open it to the town and have a big dedication to this memorial, and have this chair set up someplace in town. I know when we walk into the front hall, we have a poster board already set up for the memorial for veterans out there. In my mind, that would be an ideal place for it to be. So, thank you for your consideration for this request. We'd like to work with you on this, and to help this project go forward. This chair has been dedicated to the town, has been donated to the town to be your memorial, start of your memorial if you'd like it to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation there. I know your organization well. You guys do good work. So, I make a motion to accept Rolling Thunder's gift to the town.
Second?
Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, Matt Scherlin.
Hi, John Moore.
I'm Ben Barlett.
Hi.
Tim DaBrio.
Unanimous, thanks.
Thank you. Could I ask, how much do the chairs cost typically?
This chair, if you buy it, it's a hundred dollars. Last time we purchased it, it was a hundred dollars for the chair. They charge a lot for shipping, so I usually go up and pick them up. And it's roughly two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars for a stadium seating chair. However, I don't see that you have the need for a stadium chair.
Well, we might someday.
We've got, you know, we put stadium chairs like an Andover, they bought a chair, they put it on our trailer, they roll it into their school, and then having veteran events or whatever, otherwise it sits in American media, and then it goes on parades, it goes out in the parades, and they put a couple of flags in the trailer, you know, so it's customizable display. There's nothing written in stone as to how it has to be. Pictures show the typical installation of the chair, however, it is customizable, you know, whatever works best. This is our major function to just emphasize the need for our government to do more to bring home the nine thousand innocent Americans.
Is that the chair you're saying?
Like, the chair's gonna stay, I need the, I need the plaque to go. That chair was dedicated or donated to us for this town.
We obviously need to set it up. Yep. So, we need the flag.
We also want to talk about putting a POW flag on, we noticed it on your poll, probably won't support three flags, but maybe we can work with you on additional arrangements for a POW flag to fly somewhere in town, whether it be here, or I don't know, at your fire station.
We have our flag pole in front of the library, in front of our memorial, that monument.
Be a good place for it.
Yep. And like I said, this is, you know, this is customizable, in Auburn, they put in a bench, granite, I keep saying granite, I don't know which one it is, a black stone polished bench with POW LeMond in their Veterans Memorial. Folks are putting a chair, granite chair, or bench in their Veterans Park. So, you know, every, town is different, and these are just what these towns happen to think of wanting to do. Thank you. So I should work with you on going forward on this? We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, we'll finish out with Skip. Skip?
Good evening, Skip Severns, three forty stage road. Last time I was here, I discussed the possibility that the...
Can everybody hear him in the back?
No.
No? The aggressive action that was taken with the fire department, I'm using that as an example, showed to me that perhaps the town did not realize that some of these activities that exist in town, that are departments in town, have, let's call them bylaws, they're called different things in different aspects, but it truly came down to the fact that there's municipal officials and there's municipal employees. In my estimation, you folks have considered it in that particular case as municipal employees. I have a problem with that. I've been elected to many positions in town, I've been appointed to many positions in town. I have never, ever considered myself an employee of the town. No personnel policy, no, well, I guess you can tell me if there's something on me, but I mean, I don't know of any personnel folder or anything else that exists. I consider myself a municipal official, and there are ways in which those entities, those officials are treated, are done away with if the need be, or whatever. Typically, it does not involve the Board of Selectmen. So, this is where I raised the flag as soon as I heard about the situation in the fire department. I raised the flag because to me, it didn't follow anything that goes along with the established procedures that exist at the fire department. I'm, I got no answers last time, I'm hoping to get some answers this time, but it has mostly to do with the difference between a municipal employer and a municipal official. What do you got?
Our attorneys had reviewed the policy in regards to personnel. We are not bounded by the bylaws of your organization, the fire department, we...
Not my organization, but the town's organization.
You're speaking of the fire department's bylaws.
In that particular case, I used it as an example.
That being said, you know, where he's appointed by the Board of Selectmen, that does make him an employee of the town, and therefore, he falls under employee personnel.
How does that work? Is it because he gets paid? A stipend, what's called a stipend rather than wages? Is it because he gets benefits, which he doesn't? Is it, is it, what is it, what makes him employee when you folks did not hire him, or her, in this case?
Isn't appointing him like one of the same?
I don't think so. Really? Wow. So when I sign up on a volunteer list with you guys, and I get appointed to a committee, I then become a town employee? Wow. What am I entitled to? Benefits? Am I entitled to pay? Am I entitled to some sort of blessings that come down the pike? I don't think so. I'm not an employee.
Our attorneys reviewed it, and that's what we came up with, okay? That's...
Really? Still. Why do we have these things then? Why do bylaws exist that give procedures and all this other stuff to go with it as to how to handle situations like this? The Board of Selectmen signed off on it in two thousand and seven.
And not one of those members are here today to talk about that.
Okay. So that's cool. That's cool. So the Board of Selectmen has not changed that procedure, as best as I know. You haven't told me that it has been changed or wiped out, so at what point in time, how long did these things live for? Doesn't say in the bylaws. I'm just...
So I got a question, again, despite you out of the wack, but we're saying though, there is over one million dollars or more, two million, of town resources that are in that building.
Yep.
Alright.
John, I'm not saying this is right or wrong. I'm just saying this is an established procedure, and I don't believe you followed it, that's it. I agree, I'm not saying this is right. I just look at this and I go, something's wrong here. And if you say he's a town employee, and you use the personnel policy, then I can agree with that. But it's not my interpretation that the fire chief or any of these other organizations, including those committees that I was on, that I ever signed that I was following the personnel procedure and policy. What are you playing? What game? I don't understand.
We're not playing a game, Mr....
I, I hope you're not, but the reality of the situation is, there was an established procedure.
Okay.
And you didn't follow it. So the answer is, you don't have to follow established procedure.
As I said, the attorney reviewed both the bylaws and the personnel policy, and has termed in that he fell under the, both of them have fallen under the personnel policy.
Really?
Okay. That's all, any more I'm gonna say on it.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your time. Guess I wasted mine.
Thank you.
Okay. So, kind of things is a little backwards here, so we're gonna go back up if there's no other further comments.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
My name's Boyne Patton, eighteen Main Road. Is the Board of Selectmen involved in every personnel incident in town with everyone? Do you talk to everyone about it? So you have now the HR department as well?
Yeah.
We try to, when things rise to a certain level, when there's serious accusations and so on, yes, the Board of Selectmen does get involved. We have the final determination in regards to hiring and firing and all that. Any other questions?
One sixty, can I use general, one sixty, sorry. Where's due process?
It's happening, it's happening, right now. Okay. Maybe you didn't hear it earlier, but as I mentioned earlier, the investigation is not unheard of for the investigation like this to take this long. In fact, usually it's longer. It's my understanding, we'll be wrapping up this week. That's all we can say on it.
So is this investigation, is this investigation separate, two separate investigations, one on Mr.. Milchuk and one on Mrs. Milchuk, or are they together? Or are they together? The investigation together?
Well, they're both put on paid, they're both put on paid administrative leave, so...
But I mean, is, but are they separate in a way because, right, there's two clients, one, they both...
They're being interviewed separately.
They both have separate letters.
Yeah.
But, so they're separate investigation?
That would be my interpretation. Okay. We're gonna go back up to the top, the approved manifest, everybody had an opportunity to look at the payroll and... Minus, minus, Matt?
Sorry.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest as distributed.
I'll second.
Five one.
Five one. Two thousand and twenty-three.
And payroll.
Payroll of five two, two thousand and twenty-three.
Alright, we have a motion by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim DaBrio, roll call.
Can I have a stain on this?
You have a stain, yeah. Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Moore.
I'm Ben Barlett.
I'm Tim DaBrio.
Four yeas, one abstentions. Approved public minutes, four seventeen.
Second?
Does everybody have any questions on those? Okay.
You need a motion?
We need a motion, thanks. Yeah, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes, four seventeen, and non-public minutes, four seventeen, as read.
I'll second.
Motion made by John Moore, and seconded by Tim DaBrio. Roll call.
Matt Scherlin, abstention.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Moore.
I'm Ben Barlett.
I'm Tim DaBrio.
Four yeas, one abstention. And non-public minutes on four seventeen.
I did the same one.
That's the same one?
Yep, I included those both together.
Alright, thank you. Reports from assigned boards and committees, I don't think anybody met, but they...
We did a planning board meeting on Wednesday. The case in front of us was from Owl Ridge Builders, about a twenty-five lot, open space development located off Smoke Street. Plans should be available, I believe, online, if people wanted to look at it. So, an open space, open space development, so there's gonna be twenty-five lots, each lot is gonna consist of roughly about an acre, maybe a little less, and they're gonna, the lot is about one hundred acres in size, and about seventy-five acres would be put into a conservation easement, and one of the bunch of concerns, because it's close to the residents on, I don't know the name of the road, it was just there.
Little...
Well, it's North River.
Little River.
Little River, thank you very, there you go, sorry, I knew I was there. And it comes off, two lots will be coming off King Fisher, which is on the backside. Some of that lot is also part of the aquifer protection area, so there will be a sidewalk that the board will be doing on the seventeenth. If any of you guys want to take a walk through the woods over there, but the plans are available online, so that is what's next, coming in front of us. And then we do have another case that'll be coming in front of us in two weeks when we get meat back, or not this Wednesday, I believe, next Wednesday after that, and that'll be about the, the building that's located on Route Four, the old, what everybody likes to call the old USA Springs, about them making that a distribution center or something like that. I haven't read all the information, 'cause I still have another week and a half to go on it, but...
Yeah, the link doesn't work on the website.
So, something to look at, but that's one of the next cases that'd be of interest to the town, is using that commercial space. So, which has been vacant and not used for many years.
Who's the applicant that wants to use it?
Uh, he's the guy who owns all the land, he's a...
The builder out of Hampton?
Yeah, he does build...
The name escapes right now, but he's a well-known builder, and he's, and the reason that...
The, if you go look on the upcoming agenda for that meeting, it'll be all listed on the agenda, I just don't have that information in front of me right now. But that will be all listed, 'cause it will be a public meeting on Wednesday about that.
CIP and Marston didn't meet, did they?
No, I mean, I can give a brief update of Marston if you want.
Brief, yeah, sure.
We've got, I know the select board approved before I was elected, the funds for the dugouts, twenty-one thousand dollars.
That's what the cement was in.
The cement's in, so the first dugout for the softball field will be built, or actually, the two softball field dugouts should be built in the next week and a half, two weeks, and then the two baseball field shortly thereafter. The materials will be delivered tomorrow for that, and the cost came in about seven thousand dollars, six thousand dollars. And the cost came in about seven thousand dollars, six thousand dollars lower than what
Nice.
we needed, so...
The softball fields are the ones that are located next to the parking lot, right?
No, that's the baseball. Softball's...
Okay. Okay. Shows what I know.
Town administration report?
I'm gonna apologize in advance, it's a little bit lengthy tonight, but there's a lot of information to share. Um, first and foremost, we put out, Sean McLean put out a request for paving bids. And they were due into the office last Tuesday. Uh, we had four companies that provided bids and we've summarized them, put them on a spreadsheet for you. The lowest bidder was R and D paving, uh, for a total based on the, the project analysis Sean had provided at five hundred and four thousand thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. He does request that we move forward with the low bidder. And I'm looking for a motion on that for discussion. Copies of all of the bids that were received are there if you need to review them.
So, I, I, I just, when it comes to the paving, um, I know that, uh, the previous, actually the one right above it, paved, uh, McCrillis Road not long ago and it was horrible. What recourse do we have once they put down the pavement to come back and fix it? If there's a problem with it?
Which company was it? Was it one of these?
Yeah. Yeah, Brock's. I mean, you're going down the road, you're doing this on McCrillis when it was first paved.
It's my understanding that they're, um, the reason why they're... I, I think Sean was telling me that their southern plant or whomever had done the work has dissolved.
Okay.
I, I don't have the answer as to what recourse we have. I would say if it was a project that was completed last year.
Right, but I just don't wanna be going into the same situation, say we go with the lowest bidder. Lowest bidder is not always the best one to go with. But I'm sure not wanna go with the one above it.
Have we used R and D before?
Haven't even heard of them.
Me neither. Go ahead and ask them.
I don't know, that, that name doesn't ring a bell.
They're starting to do more projects in the area, I'm familiar with them from the north.
And have you, you been happy with the, okay.
Was that, that was...
They, they do a lot.
That wasn't a convincing yes, Alan.
Again, I'm not a, I'm not specialized in roads, so I can drive down it, it's not bumpy.
Okay. That's all I care about, if we're gonna pay money to have a road done, it should be smooth.
Do we ever get recommendations from companies like R and D since they're being one of the first times that I've seen them actually on our, our bid lists?
Uh, it's, if you look through the, the actual bid that they submitted, uh, they come with projects, I'm sorry, they're, they're in front of Ben. Um, it's part of those packets, so they've actually supplied us with their certificate of insurance, uh, past projects that they've worked on, any recommendations that they might have from state and New Hampshire DOT if they have them.
So there is a vetting process?
There is.
Okay.
And this money's already all set aside. Do you guys have any questions? I mean, I'm not one to speak up all the time, I'd also say something if you feel like it.
I did.
Matt, guess what? Go for it. You got a question?
Uh, I mean, uh, just taking a look at it, trying to figure out like, you know, obviously advanced, they haven't even given, so do we even have a rough estimate for how many tons or what their bid came in at? Because I'm...
And we've used them in the past. Vance, we used them in the past. How's the board feel going with the lowest bidder?
I guess I would, going back to your point about McCrillis is asking them what is the guarantee is on their work.
Yeah.
And it might be in that packet.
The, um, well, their certificate there for, uh, liability would cover that, I believe, wouldn't it? Yeah. So... Problem is getting them to come back. Not saying that they would be a problem, but...
Well, question two is why did Vance do it this way? And not give us a total, and everybody else gives us a total?
Not sure.
How are we supposed to realize how many tons are gonna be used on a road? I mean, could they be the lowest?
Possibly, but I wasn't gonna do their calculation for them.
Right.
Again, again. I toss it out because we don't know.
Yeah.
Personally.
It's kinda hard to vote on a TBD.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the general question of why?
Yeah.
So this, this summary, that was something that I did, based on the, on the bids that were received. So everybody else had totaled it out, they figured how many, um, tons or square yards that they needed to come up with their totals. That particular company did not, they only gave us the price per ton.
And didn't tell us how many tons it would take?
Exactly.
Kinda sounds like they didn't want the job.
Right.
You can compare to the other three companies that did provide that information, but again, I didn't wanna make the assertion that that would be what they would use.
Right.
Alright. Public Works Director recommended it.
Doesn't always make me feel warm and fuzzy, but... And I don't know R and D paving at all, so it's hard for me to... Say, let's go for it, um...
R and D.
Raymond and David.
John? John? Can you pass the packets?
Oh, yeah. There you go.
Is there a difference in the tonnage that they're proposing to use?
Doesn't say.
Doesn't break it down, it, it just has it down in price. And just, the only, the only one that has, I'm sorry. Not even... Well, it might be in that packet there.
It's sort of the bid requirements, how thick the overlay has to be. But as far as the tonnage or the square yards that they need, some of them had calculated it out, you can see it on the left-hand side of each bid packet.
Um, well, he did, obviously, because he did recommend one company.
But if you don't have all the answers then...
Well, I didn't get to actually, this is the first time I've seen that whole packet, so I haven't got to...
The bids were just received on Tuesday, so this is the first time they're being presented to the board.
Well, then, we...
So we can even table this for next meeting?
Yeah.
So, good idea. Yeah, we're gonna table it. So before we put, before we request a motion to approve, next time we'll add...
Right.
So would you like to provide feedback on what information you would like?
Well, I think those, if we could get those details.
You want copies of the, okay.
At least we could go to the towns that they've possibly paved in, we could inquire, are they happy with the job they did?
Or, and if Sean can provide information other, other than just the lowest bid.
Number of tons.
Mm-hmm.
Hundred dollar a ton vice ninety a ton. It's in here, it just takes data mining.
Okay. So we all in agreement that we'll post, we'll table this?
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, the next item that I have, um, in the highway budget, there is money set aside for the purchase of a new hot water pressure washer for the highway garage. Uh, because of the cost of said pressure washer, it's over five thousand dollars. And our purchasing policy requires competitive quotes. Uh, three quotes have been obtained. Gave you copies of those within, so there's Power Equipment Direct, uh, pressure washer would be eleven thousand sixty dollars and seven cents. Power Eagle USA out of Sandown is ninety-four hundred dollars, and Maine Oxy out of Prescott, Maine is eighty-nine fifteen fifty. In this purchase, the Public Works Director is recommending the purchase through Power Eagle USA for the convenience of servicing needs. And that would be for the purchase price of ninety-four hundred dollars. Looking for your approval on that purchase?
When he first came to us about getting this power wash, uh, equipment...
Like fifteen grand?
It was eight, eight grand. It was eight grand. Yes. And now it's fourteen hundred dollars more. I recognize the value of having someone that's close by that can service it and, and so on, but, you know, and we have an issue with, uh, maintenance of our vehicles as it is, so, um, if he can assure me that, um, this will be put to proper use and, and, and used on these vehicles or whatever, I, I may be more apt to, to vote for the higher expense, but he needs to do a better job going forward to ensuring that what he wants and the cost matches.
I have to say, I'd recommend going to, um, Power Eagle, um, they're a great company, great service. Had dealings with them before.
Okay.
Um, it's not up in Prescott, which, I don't know about you, I'm not driving up to Prescott to get my, my, uh, hot water, um, pressure washer.
Company I work for uses Power Eagle too.
Okay. Two recommendations. Excellent. Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept a bid from Power Eagle for a hot water pressure washer.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by John Moran, roll call.
Matt Sherland, aye.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Uh, the aftercare agreement for the school program, or for the Nottingham Recreation Department, I'm sorry, their program at the school, um, it's already been submitted through the insurance company. Uh, I presented this at the last meeting and requested more time to look through it. There was reference to SAU 107. Um, there was some language that just needed to be removed that had carried forward from the old contract into this one. Um, the other thing that I noticed was Nottingham Recreation was noted as a nonprofit corporation. And I changed that to a Department of the Town of Nottingham, which is an immunistically exempt corporation. Um, other than that, it's been through Primex, our insurer, uh, the school board is ready to act on it once you're ready to move forward with it, so. Um, I've presented it in your packets, it was emailed to you for review and to see if you have any comments.
Wait, 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 sits.
Has it always been a four-year contract?
They've only, this is only what, the third year, the fourth year they've had it?
Yeah.
It was a different, it was a nonprofit agency that had it before, a company that had it before.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe part of the conversation was too, the fact of making it a four-year contract, it was easier for our recreation department for overall scheduling over the years and, and planning, so that they know that this is part of their structure, what stuff they have to future look at.
Okay.
I wasn't involved with any of that.
On a one-year term, then they'd have to, they don't know whether it's gonna be back or not, so.
Cause I think...
This is kind of a planning.
Yeah, one year they had to come back here because the school wasn't available and it was a pain.
Okay.
So, that's the reason why I'm before.
So I'm looking for a motion to precedent to entering into the con, the agreement for the after-school program, as well as designate an authorized signer for the agreement.
I move.
Who do you want to authorize this to?
Oh, I'm sorry, Alan. To have Alan sign on that agreement, sorry.
We need a motion to enter into the agreement for the after-school
program and afternoon, after-school care program. Um, and we'll have Alan as the
signer.
Official signer.
I'll second. Since I didn't finish the first motion. I'll second.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by, uh, Tim DeBrio. Roll call.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous.
Okay, the MS 232, which is a report of appropriations, actually voted. This document is reported to the Department of Revenue twenty days after um, town meeting has concluded. Uh, that has been prepared based on the budget that was passed and the election, or the deliberative session. And, um, I'm looking for you to approve and sign the form so we can get it submitted fully to the Department of Revenue.
Okay. Mr. Sherland, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I, uh, I guess I vote to approve. That is what I'm gonna be saying? To approve the, uh, MS...
Two thirty-two.
The MS two thirty-two, uh, that has been prepared.
I'll second.
Whoever?
Motion made by Matt Sherland, seconded by Tim DeBrio, all in order, roll call.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous. Motion accepted.
Uh, Tracy Black has reached out to Emma Breslin to see if she had interest in serving as her deputy tax collector. Emma does express interest, she is our program coordinator for the Recreation Department. And, uh, she comes forward with Tracy's recommendation for this, I'm just looking for you to formally appoint her based on the tax collector's recommendation. And there's an appointment form in the folder that needs to be signed. Emma Breslin.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Emma Breslin to deputy tax collector.
Second it?
Motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch, uh, roll call.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous, motion passed.
And lastly, before I get into updates with the various departments, which I will promise to keep brief, um, there are a few action items, there was a lot of correspondence that came in in between the meetings. And I'm just looking for, um, an idea of how you'd like to proceed with action on any of this correspondence, if any. Uh, the first one was from Autumn Ricker regarding the town beach comments and recommendations he had made following the, the beach cleanup. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review it or if you would like to comment or provide response back.
Well, I mean, did I, did I read it?
I read it, yeah.
I read it.
I read it too.
Yeah.
Also?
Well, the dam, what he mentioned in his comments was it's state property as far as I was, I always thought of it, the dam only, the state, not, not anybody else, so. That was, usually it's like on the dam on the other side of the lake, on the Dolph side, it lists no trespassing. I'm not saying people don't do it, but it still says no trespassing.
Well, I think that's fertile land on that side though.
No, 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 on Dolph.
Oh, okay, okay.
Dolph sides.
Go, we're on the other side.
There used to be a sign.
Is it gone?
Yes, it's been...
It's been a while since it's been there.
Three years.
Okay, well...
And, and it should be there, I agree.
There was one though, right?
And no one ever bought, or whatever.
Well, I'm not saying that, right, but... But that's, you know, the state. So, he asked about also putting, uh, no parking.
But I think he's, going back, I think his point was is that it says it in other places, that it's town, it's, it's private property.
Well, what you on the other side, it's, it's furnished property. I'm aware the marker is, I never looked for it in my time, so I have no idea where it ends or where it starts, but...
Right, if you go to the left, it's Dave's furnished property. Jimmy owns to the, the right, Dave owns to the left.
There's a certain section in there that's granted for the town property. But the access to that beach is not town property.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's permission to access.
Personally, I wouldn't feel real comfortable having boats launching with kids swimming. I think it's a little bit of a health issue.
Safety. It was also expressed due to the fact of the mill foil that's already in the area, and the fact that the state might be coming to, we'll get onto that probably later, I think, but whatever, um, you know, clear that area. You know, they, this Lake Association wants to be able to see the boats that are coming in. That's why they like to keep all the boats being launched, uh, at the fun day launch.
Including kayaks.
Including kayaks, canoes, so that they have a, a chance to view the, the boats to make sure there is no invasive species as, you know, invasive, you know, Japanese or Chinese snails, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
You know, and they want the opportunity to look at it, if we let that open up to everybody, that could be open enough to friends and friends of people in town coming over, who knows where they've been with their boat, so...
But from what he's saying, it sounds like people are doing it now.
Well, people breaking law everywhere.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of trying to control it, I think is what we're, you know, we don't want to give an open policy to it, until they make it a free-for-all, or we'd rather keep it as things, but I understand his point, because the boat launch gets packed, I mean, it's, it's.
Well, and he also mentioned having parking out at the airfield road, which we don't have any control over that either, that's state property, so.
Right, well, he actually put even, I thought he had the thing that said he wanted signs that said no parking on the side of the road.
He said the select board voted on having no parking last year.
Yes.
They just haven't been installed yet.
There you go.
Why not?
Uh, because I don't think it was ever communicated to the public works director to get them on order, it was just brought to our attention a few weeks ago.
Can we convey that to him, please?
It was something that was voted on in July, it's been relayed to him.
Okay.
We found the minutes. Um, there was an email received from Therese Thompson with a request to stop the Potuckaway State Park expansion uh, due to the invasive species impact on waterways, I'm not sure if you had a chance to read that, or.
I went to the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I was there.
Um, so like if you want to, if you want to correspond, or if you want me to respond on any of these, just let me know, I'll try to blow through them. Um, the Friends of the Bladestone Memorial Library are looking to install the Free Little Libraries.
Yeah, I saw the pictures, yep.
Free Little Libraries? They're, they're little libraries that they can install, where they can put a number of books in there for people to grab at their leisure. Free Little Library. Um, and then I also shared some email correspondence that I had with Mike Saint Laurent. Uh, he is objecting to the Watercross Special Event License that was issued at the last lab board meeting, because he does not feel that, um, it was properly agended and that the public didn't have a chance to comment on it, so. Um, questioning to you whether or not you want to proceed with any type of, um, offering him the ability to appeal your administrative decision to the zoning board, or if you would like to reconsider.
Well, this already went to court.
Yeah.
This has already went to court, and the court's favored in front of the, for the Watercross.
Um, he did express some, or I, I had him provide me some information, he, he does not feel that they're complying with the variance that was granted to them. So, I'm, I'm providing it to you as information, if you would like to do anything with it.
Right, I mean, I'd speak on the, that Free Little Library, I think that's a no-brainer. Why not let them put up a? You decide where to put it. Personal feeling.
Yeah, I didn't even think that was, I just thought it was gonna get done.
I kinda thought so too.
Yeah, okay.
Three.
Right, one that affects us personally. I think the others affect some other departments that. Mm-hmm.
So we'll find an appropriate place for that. Um, just as a heads up, the library is looking forward to move forward with, um, a shed that they're putting in, on the library property. And I'm just clearing it by you to make sure you have the authority of what happens on town properties. So they have a building permit application, all the plans and specs drawn up, and, um, Charlie, the interim building inspector, is just looking for permission to go ahead and proceed with issuing the permit for that shed to be installed.
Where's it gonna be placed?
Um, I can send you the details, I don't have it with me available at the moment.
And what are we starring in it?
I don't have that information either.
Okay, I'm just curious what the library would want with a storage shed.
Well, anything that they, you know, like rakes or anything that they have, or, yeah, we have no, there is no storage at the library. The only storage is in that, which was supposed to be the coal room, and, you know, this multiple, it's, you know, this shovel, and this salt, and this soil, you know, any, uh.
Could they go across the street to the old firehouse? Just saying.
Yeah, I heard you.
I don't have an issue with it.
I don't know.
You? It's a shed.
Right.
Three.
No.
So I'll move forward with just some quick updates. Uh, the new utility truck, it's received, it's line X lining, the plow gear and the lighting, it's in the process of getting radio equipment installed, and then it will be lettered this week, um, road gate, road grading continues.
What color is this truck?
It's black. I haven't seen it yet, I haven't laid eyes on it.
All right, so, it's not the same colors of the highway department.
It's lime green, did you know the color?
It's black.
Oh, okay.
Well, white, that's all they had in the lot.
Perfect.
So, um.
The color matters to me, but.
How important is it, where the colors match?
Well, in the world of where we're penny pinching right now, I guess it really doesn't matter, so.
Do you want me to look into the cost of?
Well, I know what it would cost, cause I had one of my trucks wrapped, so, uh, which is far cheaper than having it painted. And then it can have the logo actually on the wrap itself, and it does a great job protecting the paint and, and all that, so when it comes time to turn this vehicle and you can pull the wrap off, it's like a brand-new. You see my truck?
No.
Again, you know, I understand with the, you know, with trying to save money here, but at the same time too, mix and match vehicles.
Uh, the recycling center research is being done on some tire storage options, including a potential purchase of a Cofec storage box, uh, similar to what we purchased for the police department, and it's installed on, um, Smoke Street. Um, we do need a way that we can keep them undercover, I believe that an option was presented to you to put some type of a roofed cover over it in the past, and it was gonna be more than $10,000, and that option got turned down. Um, storage box, we're, we're working on preliminary quotes, I think we're around six to $8,000. To see if that would be an option, but we do have to cover them, so unless a better solution is presented, that's what we're looking at. Uh, Wayne Smith has received his solid waste operator certification. This is an update, um. The facilities advisory committee is wrapping up their assessment, they had, um, what I think was one of their final meetings this evening, and they'll be providing their full analysis to you on all of the town buildings, and this will be.
Actually, we have one more meeting.
One more meeting, thank you, thank you for the update. Um, and then there's a whole laundry list of things that the recreation department's been working on, community cleanup day, there was over 87 volunteers that helped to clean up, um, the facilities, the dugouts, the, the trails, the town hall, fossil fields, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the Eagle Scout project, um, that you approved a couple weeks back, uh, to create a pollinator garden at the, at Marston, as an Eagle Scout project. Um, that has been done, and there's a link to that. Uh, the egg hunt, and you've been egged, there was over 305 participants in their families this year, last year there was only 123. Uh, the department held their first-ever pickleball tournament for the legacy leaders, and next year there's gonna be a Halloween tournament to kick off the indoor season. Legacy leaders spring walks are in progress. And, the summer camp is almost full, there's additional camps. And they're excited to say that they have the return of two lifeguards this year, something that they've been lacking for several years.
Good news.
Um, so they're gonna be utilizing the town beach, and the fishing derby is scheduled for May 13th.
Would those lifeguards be on, I mean, it's a question to ask them? But will they be there on Saturdays too, or is it be just during the time that they're using the water?
I'm not sure what the schedule is, I know that it's two part-timers, so it's going to be, I, I imagine there's probably gonna be some type of a flex schedule, so that there's someone there during.
Saturdays are heavy use time, so I just didn't know if that was family and kids, if that was a time where, or is this gonna be for the, the rec program?
I have a few minutes for the rec program, cause I don't think they've been able to go.
Optimistic.
Yeah, I know, it'd be fantastic.
And then, so the fishing derby is scheduled for May 13th, the town yard sale and plant swap is scheduled for June 17th, and that will be here at the town hall. That is all I have to report for this week.
That was enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Sorry.
Action items, action items from last room?
You still have to go.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Assessing's after that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I keep thinking of someplace else, my bad.
Robin Como. Robin Como for Stevens Hill Road. Uh, there was some correspondence, you were looking for a legal opinion on how you should proceed with whether or not you do the, you accept the 25-foot setback that we haven't been able to find any proof of in set of the road easement deed that was a condition on the planning board.
Right. Um, I, I, uh, is the board, won't the board take in the decision?
Let's see, we, um. I personally don't think we should override what the planning board has decided to do. I mean, what right do we have as a board of selectmen to say? I mean, it's a, it is easement, I mean, it's not.
John?
He spoke before I did.
What are you, what are you talking about?
Uh, trust came from the planning board, there was a, um, a new lot that was created on Stevens Hill Road at the way end. And, you know, there's a lot of conditions on the property, I mean, too many to, I mean, I don't have all, you literally need to read the whole pamphlet. And one of them was on the fact of, uh, an easement, you know, for the road, because of the point of the road, it's only like maybe 15 feet, so according to the lot, they wanted to put an easement in order to make it, if they ever had to, future widen it or do whatever, cause of the lot. So, that's basically where it came to, you know, as part of the conditions of the approval. There, there was an easement, does put in, so.
Uh, did a woman actually appear before you to help that?
She did.
Yes, that was, that was me.
That's that woman.
So Robin is here.
So, I, I just have a question, so, like I brought up before, I know, um, you say that you don't wanna go against what the planning board put forward, but the planning board told us, when we requested to have them remove that condition, because where the easement is going to be, if it goes right, it's going right to the cemetery, the old historic cemetery that's there, which means they'll bring in, if they do any widening of the roads, then bring the road in to my field more, and then that cemetery is gonna stick out, so there's no, I, I don't know how you, you know, go around that, um, and then it was talked about, um, you know, moving that cemetery, the planning board said, no, that wouldn't happen, so, my whole thing was, why do I have to an easement if this will never, ever occur? So I'm giving up the rights to that part of my land, um, so that was the biggest thing. And the planning board did tell us that in order for the condition to be removed, was the board of selectmen had the final say on it, so. Um, I understand what you're saying, they put the condition forth, but they told us that in order for it to be moved, it would be before the selectmen's, you know.
I'm not removing it.
Yeah, I, from what I had read, I didn't, I didn't think we had the authority, even though the planning board had put it on us to, to do that.
Right, I would agree with you, I don't think we have the authority to do that. I mean, we don't wanna overstep, I mean, I think the process has been placed, you probably had plenty of time to appeal it.
Now we can't, we don't have any more time, this has been three years.
Well, I know, but I'm saying.
Now we need the building permit, and that's not been given to us until this is taken care of, so.
Yep. It is, and I feel for you, but I think it's the right thing to do is to issue the easement.
I don't know where we're motioning on.
It's nothing, yeah.
We're, we're not, we're not overturning that what the planning board has already said and done, a part of their condition, so I don't see any warrant for us to make a motion on something that we're not.
Okay.
Making any decision on.
Sounds like the board doesn't wanna overturn the planning boards.
And is that what the council also said?
We asked her about that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I believe that, that's also what she said.
So what's that?
It's in the folder, if you need to reference it. There's a, there's a Como folder.
Hmm?
There's a folder that says Como on it, I tried to keep everything separated for you.
Nope.
This is, uh, this is all Lamprey.
My eyes, can you read that?
Uh, can we read the whole thing?
Well, just where it says pertaining to this, you know, the board, the planning board.
Um, so the part she wrote here is, the planning board's notice of decisions required this road easement as a condition of approval to the subdivision application. Without the road easement, the conditions of the planning board will not be met. The decision issued on October 26, 2022, RSA 677, colon 15, dash, I, requires that all planning board decisions concerning subdivisions must be appealed to superior court within 30 days of the, the date of the decision. The appeal deadline has passed, I find no authority for the board of selectmen to overturn this decision. That was from our attorneys at Upfield and Hatfield.
So then my next question is, if I have my lawyer send easement over tomorrow, um, will someone get in touch with Dale, that he shouldn't be? He already has the building permit, it's just a matter of giving it to us now.
Yeah, well, you got, who is it, Charlie?
Yes, Charlie.
But Dale's the one that's, he's done everything with it, um, I know he's fired a chief, or I have to fire a chief now, but, um.
Well, he comes in the morning. We can look in that text, but I'd like that for her, can't we? Okay.
Well, the road easement deed's already been drafted, she just needs to sign it, it needs to be recorded at the.
It's only, it's only designed, it just has to be.
Yeah, he's here in the morning, so I'm pretty sure it could be, you know, taken care of.
Okay, who would I get a hold of to, 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 tomorrow?
Well, we, we need a copy of the easement deed and needs to be sent to the registry for recording.
I'm sorry, say that again.
It has to be sent to the registry of deeds for recording.
So even if you get a copy of it tomorrow that's signed.
If, if we get the original copy that's signed tomorrow, we can get it to the registry of deeds and let them, let the building department know that the process is in the works, and that you can be issued, well, you, you need the driveway permit reinstated, and then the building permit.
We never had, we was never, uh, we never received any notice saying that that was taken away.
Okay, that, that's something that you're gonna have to discuss with, um, I think Dale and Sean.
Assessing? We have, uh, what, one, two, three, four, report of timber cuts and one report of excavation. Everybody had an opportunity to review those?
And so, are we ready to make a, a motion?
Absolutely. Can we make one motion for all of them?
One motion for the timber cut, and then the excavation will be separate.
Okay. Make a motion to accept, um, timber cuts map three, lot 2.2. Timber cut on map two, lot one. Timber cut on map 29, lot eight. Timber cut map 52, lot four dash two.
I second.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim DaBrio. Roll call.
Uh, I was gonna abstain, Matt Sherland.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Four ayes, one abstention.
Make a motion to accept the report of excavation, map 10, lot 12.
I second.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim DaBrio. Roll call.
Abstain, Matt Sherland.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Four ayes, one abstention. Review action items for next meeting?
We tabled the paving, the paving bids.
Yeah, that's right, paving. Uh, we have to table every garage for Lamprey.
In Lamprey.
Can we see if, uh, we can have Sean here for the next meeting?
Yes, and you also have, um, the recycling center policy for review, so I was gonna ask that he be present for that anyways.
Okay.
Did, were you ever able to get an answer on the aluminum can piece?
As far as the volume that goes out?
Or, well, we had talked about, cause they wanted a new compactor to crush the cans, and we asked, there's a trailer that they use too, as well as the compactor, what's the difference in cost between the two?
I don't know if, uh, Sean was, I think he was going to be looking into a price for a new trailer, new dump body trailer. And I will follow up with him, he won't be back in again until Thursday, I believe.
So just I curious, what are we doing with the old truck?
The utility is supposed, the old utility is supposed to go to the transfer station, I'm sorry, the recycling center.
For what purpose?
They can haul their own stuff.
They're using their own vehicles coming back and forth. They're using their own vehicles coming back and forth. And it won't care about you something.
Please call the recycling center.
Hmm?
I corrected myself, Steve.
Okay. So, we got that, um, assessing is done. Do you have it on public?
Yes.
Any of it on public?
Okay.
And I'll open up the few minutes of public comments. Anything? What's the, uh?
My name is William Banks, I live at twenty-three Camelport. Uh, I was curious, is there a way that the city of Nottingham could perhaps petition the state government to put gravel in the gigantically deep holes that go down to the boat ramp here in town? Would that maybe build a fire under the state to where they say, oh, yes, that definitely needs to be done, we'll go ahead and see if we can do it?
Something we'll look into then.
Something you might want to also, because that is actually state park land.
Right.
Uh, is go see the state park manager, uh, and ask him, go to Mountain Road, you're on the front there, and ask him about the maintenance of that part of the road of the property.
Okay.
He might have also some pull too with the state.
Mountain Road, is that where you're pulling to Pawtucket Way Park?
Yeah.
They have that office right there.
Yeah, the office right there, the house right there is where he lives, and.
That's somebody that might.
He's the park manager.
Yes.
So, he's run all five thousand five hundred acres, it's under his.
And that's part of his park?
It's state land, but it's still considered state park.
It is considered park, alright.
Yes, so.
Alright, I'll try that, and maybe we could try it from the other direction too, and see if.
Okay.
Something done there, that'd be great.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. Hi, Charlotte Fife, eighty-five Deerfield Road. Um, a vacancy has occurred in the office of our state rep. And, um, I asked that the select board request the governor and council for a special election to fill the vacancy, uh, pursuant to following the provisions of RSA six-five-five, colon eight-one, and RSA six-five-five, colon eight.
Noted, noted. Charlotte, might I add, I appreciate your hard work, as well as the facilities committees, you know, members as well, what you guys have put together, thank you. Anybody else wants advice?
I have a question, I'm a little confused, so. Um, Shelley Tenness, seventeen Robin Hood Drive. So, I'm just confused with, I have no clue understanding with the bylaws for the fire department as far as how that all works. So, my question is, because you're stating that they are town employees based on those bylaws?
They're town employees based on the, um, personnel policies that were put forth.
Okay, so, if you're, if, so if there are other groups in town, and I hate to call them a group, because it's really not a group, but, um, I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna ask, as far as the food pantry is concerned, we have our own bylaws. So, am I considered under that as a town employee? Or is that separate than what they are?
I believe you would fall under that.
Under the town employee? See, I need to, I need more clarification then on that.
We'd be happy to discuss that with the attorney if you want more clarification.
I do, I would like that, because I wasn't thinking that I'm considered that.
We need to get a lot more clarification.
Yeah, I just, and I would like, and I, and that's the other thing, I would like to see if you could put that on your agenda at some point, or under the things that you need to work on as far as more clarification in all of that. Because you've got conservation, you've got
Yes.
library, you have Pawtucket Way.
Yes.
That we're giving money to, a group there, so.
Noted.
Okay, I'm just asking, then, if that's what it is, because then I'm under, then right now, you're saying that I'm under the umbrella of not being able to associate with our two employees that are now on administrative leave.
I believe that's just for the fire department.
Paid administratively.
It wasn't clear in the letter.
Okay.
It was a general statement that said town employees, it didn't specify a specific department.
So, I think that needs to be cleared, that needs to be cleared up too, we've got people that are just not, uh, talking with them, you know, because they're not sure if they can, or them not talking with others, not sure if they can, and I just feel like, yeah, that needs to be cleared up a little bit more.
Okay.
Thank you.
And again, I'm, no, I'm not gonna.
I, I.
Talking with them and saying, and stuff, talking about, talking about situations is a whole different atmosphere.
Okay.
Best judgments.
And I understand that, and I'm just trying to be respectful on both account, on both sides. And I think they're trying to be respectful on both sides, and I think that they, right now, really don't know who to talk to, because they're not sure, okay, is this person a town employee, is this person not? Is it just the fire department? Can they speak with other people, so?
Oh, as I was pointing out, it wasn't clear, Will.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say something quicks.
Yeah.
Mary Cronkite, I, I just wanted to, um, get a clarification, um, Lance, about the subdivision on Smoke Street. Um, I know it encompasses a hundred acres, I would like to know how much of that acreage is considered weapons, um, in that total? That's what I really would like to.
I know.
Know, it wasn't discussed the other night. Is that a clear, is there a clear answer for that?
I, you know, I, all the packet we got, which was seventy-eight pages.
Right.
Uh, which was a lot of, probably one of the most detailed packages I've, I've seen in my almost eight years of sitting on the planning board.
I think it's an important question that should be answered.
No, it's absolutely, there's a lot of questions in there that are gonna be answered and brought up. I mean, this is, this case here, don't be surprised if it takes four months or five months and, and six, eight, ten meetings to go over all the details about everything that's, it's a specific property, they're doing things that are a little different from what maybe have done on other properties. You have aquifer, aquifer protection area that's over there on there. Uh, there was, you know, quote-unquote, a road that was never really a road, but technically was a road back maybe two, I mean, there's.
One, six.
There's all, so much, yeah.
I live in a small, a little cul-de-sac that has six acres of common, I'm, you know, just a small one like that. But if there's saying, you know, seventy acres or whatever is going into common.
Yeah, seventy-five.
Or seventy-five.
Yeah.
I wanna know, is, is seventy of that wetlands, you know, I wanna know how much wetlands is.
No, it's not, because you can't buy the, if you, when you look at how the rules and regulations work, when you do open space subdivisions, you can't, and please don't take this the wrong way, you can't take all the junk unbuildable land and put it in, and then just use the buildable land. You literally have to have a fifty-fifty or greater split of putting good land. So, it can't be just, we're just picking out the nice area that we can build on and throw in all the rest of conservation. You can't do that according to the, the rules, um, of how the, how it's written on a, on the open space subdivision, so. Wetlands consist of like a section that comes down where they're not building in it, they're building over here and over here, and they're trying to avoid all that area. Uh, but they're still around the other one, if you look on there, there's a lot of land that's around. Yeah, it's listed actually on the website.
Yeah, I see.
I mean, bring, bring your.
My son, about his property, talks that area, so.
Watch out for ticks, it's gonna be lovely.
Uh, thank you, appreciate it.
Make a motion, uh, adjourn?
Oh, go into non-public.
To act in non-public.
Go into non-public, yes.
I second.
I just have another question, sorry. I have my easement deed here, if we could get it signed tonight, so I can take it tomorrow and register your deeds.
Does she take it there, or do we send it there?
Um.
I should know this.
Yeah, we, we, we can send it, or she can send it, but it needs to be signed to you, by you as a Board of Selectman and her.
Okay, I'm gonna sign it.
Hmm?
And I think it was drafted so that Donna and Tony were on there as well, so we'll just have to update the names. Have to scratch the names out. As long as it's an original signed copy, they'll record it.
Okay.
They can notarize it.
Can you notarize it?
I'm an notary.
Perfect.
Please.
Sure, bring it up. Walk this way.
We should probably grab the one from the folder, because that's the one that our attorney drafted.
Which folder? I'll just give you the whole folder, and just pass that to her.
Hey, um.
I have something, I'll wait.
Oh.
So, this is the one we should sign?
Why are you saying? Like, what did I forget?
Exactly.
Oh, I got this, um. Oh, that's what she's. Yeah.
I'm in front of you, yeah, buddy? That's alright, I can step over.
Oh. Yeah, my sister, another car, I don't think. We'll sign one copy.
Robin?
Hey, how you doing?
We have a copy right here, we're correcting the selectman's name.
Thank you, sir.
It had the prior board names on there. It had the prior board members on there, so I'm just having to correct it.
Yeah.
And I can, I can notarize it, I'm a notary, so I'll notarize it and just get it sent to the registry.
We'll, we'll take the chairs out, we'll take care of it.
What's your name?
Kitchen's unlocked, right?
Where it's signed tonight, I was gonna let Dale and Charlie know tomorrow that we have the signed.
Don't know, I'm, I'm.
They just have a question. I think the, the driveway permit was being held up on.
Well, you say for it, okay.
So, that should be able to be restored.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Okay, alright, because, yeah, and I had questioned that, because I couldn't find anything in the file, but Dale said that it was written in the interim before he took the fire chief. When he was appointed, the interim position.
Hey, cross out Donna Davis' name. Cross out Donna Davis', write his name and sign.
So, he wants some explanation as to what he's gonna be signing.
Ah.
Before he signs on.
The, the timber stuff, I was just curious, like, what is, what am I signing?
Oh, I thought you were, were you curious about signing that, that easement thing, or?
No, the rest of the documents that we passed over to him.
Yeah, we picked up the tail under.
I don't know that one, I mean, I know.
Like, in long-term time.
Everybody thinks it's a long-term time, right?
It's very long-term.
Right. My feelings may be ninety, but, you know, no one's questioning me. Uh.
I don't know, I didn't. Wrote my name.
You know, I have to go look up, I, I can, I, I know the name, and if I seen him, I'd probably tell you that, that's exactly who he is. I'll have to search him on Facebook.
Yeah, but you can cross it out.
Why, is something bad? I don't wanna know, never mind.
First of me.
Alright, are we, uh? We gotta wait her to finish?
She's finishing signing now.
DJ?
Nice to meet you, man.
Yes. Yes. Yes, man. I knew I seen you at this. But, uh, yeah, you're pressing my wife, it's on the school, I'm reading. My wife's on ETA.
All I know is that what they said contradicted what do we doing, but I.
Yep, I remember you from.
I want her to get a goddamn permit.
Put the way.
Well, that was gonna be worse.
Many for.
They can't read this either.
No, how's it going? Hey, how are you? Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I know, we're probably, we're talking part of the.
Signing or saying, it's that like. The approval of cotton sale of the timber.
Thank you, exactly. So, this actually comes from, uh, more of the assessors. Right, because we're doing the tax.
Yep.
Okay.
So, we're basically, this is the tax, they're gonna pay off all their timber that they're taking off their profit. So, we're just saying, anyway, this is what it is. Obviously true, this is what we're gonna get for our timber tax, our money, you know, this is gonna go thirty-two, four.
Okay, no, I don't, I don't remember seeing.
They reported inside the selectman's office.
Reading up on it today, but, I mean, what's the timeline?
If you could resend it, and then I will acknowledge, are you sending it to the jury?
Like, the time, the timeframe, they're going, if you.
It doesn't matter, you can send it to EY too, and it's the same email address, they're just alias of each other. I'll look that up.
We're moving, uh, twelve. You can't really, we're moving that, that. Because they're going to sell the material.
Yeah, if you wanna resend it, and then if I get it, then I'll acknowledge it. I don't respond to you tomorrow.
I'm just cutting all the oaks down, I gotta be like this, 'cause I keep.
Thank you.
Okay.
The third oak, I went down for my oats, I got an outside border, people that took.
Hopefully we can get it on the street.
You passed me the original signed copy, so we're gonna have to bring it to them.
Or you say, hey, I'm cutting up all my trees.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was a great vacation, I tried to keep up with all this stuff, though, 'cause I knew coming back on Friday that I was.
I didn't keep up with it.
Okay.
As soon as this recorded, I'll just pop you through.
Be a rough few months.
This is more on a large scale.
I'd like to use a more, more exciting thing.
Okay. This year came up front here.
This product is just passing. I don't know, peak, big psych.
We have to set up for that.
We were expecting it, but I, I don't think I was expecting as many.
Yeah? Go.
Someone else there? Somebody raise their hands. Possible. Transparency.
Nice to meet you.
It's like four or five votes right now, right?
Thank you.
No.
Well, I understand that, but I'm, we might as well get it out there with early.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, that's what I'm hopeful for. Thank you. Thanks for having me. Yeah. I, I can say that. I, I can feel this good, though.
Alright, folks, we, uh, we all sent, we don't have a public here.
Very much.
Get your man out of here.
What kind of Welch are you? What do you just?
I just need a motion, I just, I'm not shutting the recording.
Alright, we need a motion.
Guys, we need some stuff for the.
Alright, everybody, we're going to non-public, get out.
RSA ninety-one A.
Ninety-one A. Evoking.
To the board.
Three, two, A.
John, this is a long day sitting here tonight.
Good, John, make a motion. I'll queue there. Motion, uh, ninety-one A. Yeah. I make a motion to go into non-public per RSA ninety-one A, dash, three, dash, A.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion made by John Warren, seconded by Tim DeBrio. Roll call.
Aye, Matt Schron.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous, thank you Nottingham, goodnight.